Call meeting to order. It is Tuesday, August 2nd. We're here for the Freeport Town Council meeting number fifteen dash twenty-two in Town Hall, Town Council chambers. I'll do a roll call. We have tonight Counselor Pillsbury.
President.
Counselor Fornier.
Here.
Counselor Lawrence.
Here.
Counselor Daniele.
Here.
Vice Chair Egan.
Here.
Chair Pilch is here and Counselor Bradley should be joining us on Zoom.
I heard him.
Yep. So since we've got Counselor Bradley on Zoom, we'll have to do roll call votes. And I think we need to see it on video too, if I'm not mistaken, when we do voting. So. But first, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you want to rise and join me in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
To the Republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Justice.
Okay. Next up, we've got minutes to approve. The second order of business is to waive the reading of the minutes from meeting fourteen dash twenty-two, which was a very short meeting that I was not present for, held on July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and to accept the minutes as printed.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Daniele.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Egan. Any questions on the minutes from July nineteenth? Let's do roll call vote on this. So Counselor Pillsbury.
Aye.
Counselor Fornier.
Abstain.
Counselor Lawrence.
Abstain.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counselor Egan.
Yes.
Counselor Bradley.
Yes.
And I abstain as well, but I think we've got enough to pass that. So we've got minutes approved from July nineteenth. Next up, we have announcements, and I don't think I have any announcements to make tonight. Counselor Egan has some. None for me, okay. Counselor Egan.
I just want to remind everybody about a fabulous music event happening this Saturday, August sixth, in Memorial Park. This is the first of several music events that are going to be held in town, downtown, on a Saturday. It's also the first Saturday of the month, so the Makers on Main will be happening. And all afternoon, free, local, excellent talent music happening in Memorial Park. Please stop by for some of it, most of it, or all of it, and learn a little bit about your local fellow musicians. And I also want to highlight, coming up in September, and there'll be a lot more details coming out, but to mark your calendar for September twenty-fifth, which is a Sunday, and that is Freeport's participation in Drive Electric Week. This is a national event happening that we're going to collaborate with here locally to focus on transition away from fossil fuels in vehicles and home improvement equipment, work and play, things that you can do at your house, all kinds of focus on more sustainable use of machinery focusing on electricity. So that's coming up on September twenty-fifth, sponsored by Freeport Climate Action Now. Those are my two announcements.
Any others? All right, say none, moving on. Fourth order of business already, we're up to information exchange. So if any councilors have items they want to chat about, this would be a good time to do that. Anybody? Counselor Daniele.
I just wanted to point out that the bridge that goes off of the Pounder Road Fields was replaced. So if you can park at the Pounder Road Fields and walk to Hedgehog, and it looks amazing, and they did it in like one day, like one guy, it was really impressive. So shout out to whoever did that.
Awesome. Awesome. Counselor Egan.
I just want to report on the Social Racial Equity Committee has been meeting regularly and included a statement on affordable housing as an equity issue that was included in our agenda packets. I'm not sure how many of you got a chance to read it, but Linda Berger is here from the committee. And if it's not a problem, Linda, I think, is going to read the statement, which is encouraging us to tackle the issue of affordable housing from a regulatory perspective and talk about how we can move the issue to the planning board. Linda, if you wouldn't mind just stepping up to read it.
Can I move this down?
No, it'll pick you up.
It'll pick up, yeah.
Okay. So my name is Linda Berger. I am on the Social Racial Equity Committee. I've been on it since the inception, and we are still continuing with our work. Thank you for allowing us to do that. So this is the statement that we've written. It is from our committee on recommendation for affordable housing. The Freeport Social and Racial Equity Ad hoc Committee, also known as SREC, was created by the Freeport Town Council in late two thousand twenty. As our work continued over the past few months, we have had discussions on the topic of housing diversity and affordability. We believe that a diversity of housing at varying income levels supports a vibrant community. With a diverse workforce comes a diverse buying public, which supports a diversity of businesses. This is certainly a goal of the Freeport Downtown Vision Plan. The need for affordable housing has been going on for a long time. It's becoming more apparent and urgent as the Freeport Downtown Vision Plan unfolded, and new developers have begun the process of submitting plans for housing in the downtown. Changes to the Freeport zoning regulations need to be updated to catch up with the sudden building momentum. In order to address the necessity of creating updated building and zoning standards that address this need for affordability and encourage equity and inclusion, we would like the Freeport Town Council to direct the planning board to develop recommendations and standards aimed at improving housing diversity and affordability. We're happy to work with the council and the planning board in an advisory manner and to assist in gathering data that supports this initiative. We appreciate your comments and are happy to answer your questions. Thank you from the members of the Freeport Social Racial Equity Committee, and this letter is signed July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. And thank you. And if you have any questions, I can try, but.
Thanks, Linda.
As you move forward, we're always going to be available.
The introduction of the topic is really just that for tonight. And what I would like to have considered in talking with the chair, but get some input from the rest of the council as well, to have this as a other business item at our first meeting in September. Our next meeting in August is out on Buston's Island, which is a lot less business oriented. But if we could have this as a fifteen or twenty-minute conversation item, just to talk about some different ideas about what the council might do in a direction to the planning board to start bringing some elevation to this issue to see if we can be a little more proactive in sponsoring what's happening. I've asked Matt Peters from the Freeport Housing Trust to come and just, again, make himself visible that we have an excellent organization already in town doing a lot of this, and they know a lot about how these things work and would be an excellent partner in whatever that collaboration process is. So I don't know, Matt, if you want to just say a word or something or. Yeah, sure, just come up to, just so that we can keep some daylight on the issue.
Hi, my name is Matt Peters. I'm the executive director of the Freeport Housing Trust. I concur with the committee's recommendation that the council look into all options of how they could support affordable housing within the town of Freeport. Planning board direction and that type of regulatory response is one angle. There are many other options as well. And so I do urge you to explore a full host of possibilities and pick the ones that are the right fit for Freeport at the right, you know, whatever does fit within your comprehensive plans' goals, as well as the current town council and residents' goals of inclusion and equity. So again, Freeport Housing Trust, thanks, and we look forward to being a part of any future conversations, as well any solutions.
Matt, is it possible that you or you and/or some members of the Freeport Housing Trust Board might join us on that first meeting in September for a workshop discussion?
Of course, and any standing meeting as well. If there is something that is more intentional that comes out of that initial meeting.
We're not likely to have a concrete statement in one meeting. In fact, I'm pretty certain we're not going to have a concrete statement in one meeting, but to just start talking about some different ideas, that would be great. Appreciate your offer to help. Thanks, Matt.
To that point, can we actually have at that meeting some concrete things that are on the table? Because I'm in support of it, but I can't wrap my head around like what we're talking about putting into place. And I think having a laundry list of suggestions or ways to make improvements to the process would be great, and then we can kind of have a more productive dialogue around it.
Certainly make that happen.
Counselor Fornier.
Oh, I like that. And I think we had a workshop, Matt, and we talked about maybe rezoning issues so we can use existing land that we have to possibly go up multiple stories. And I'm not sure where that's going because, you know, I look at Twenty-Fourth South Street, I'm saying, wow, you know, we could take and maybe repurpose some of the single stories into multiple stories with already the infrastructure. I'm very interested in maybe, you know, seeing, I agree with you, Matt. That'd be very helpful to me to have maybe some bullet points and items that have been a problem for you that we could really address going forward. Thank you.
Super. Any other information exchange? I have two.
Thanks very much.
Items. Thank you both. The, we have a vacancy on the school board. I think you all got an email about it. We can fill that vacancy until the next election, which is coming up in November. We've had one interested applicant, Cara Kikini, I think is how you pronounce it. I did call her and ask if she would be available tonight. She's not, she's teaching a course tonight, a class tonight, so she wasn't available to come. But she's very eager and interested. I had a nice chat with her. Since it's not on the agenda tonight, I didn't want to sneak it in. I don't think it's appropriate for us to vote on it tonight, but I would suggest we do that at our next meeting, and then hopefully she can come and do a little introduction beyond what she had emailed as a self-introduction. And if anyone else is interested in the position, they can send in a letter as well. But otherwise, we can take action on Cara's position or the vacant position at our next meeting, which I don't think we could do at Buston's Island. So I assume that'll be September. Yep. And then second, just wanted to give a brief update on Downtown Vision. Still continues to move forward. We had another meeting of the task force last Thursday. We meet every Thursday, or sorry, once a month on the last Thursday, fourth Thursday of the month. And where we are in the process of things is we, as you recall, the end of the large document we got from principal, there was a list of seventy or eighty projects. When we looked at those projects, we realized some of them are just aspirational goals. You know, we want to be more like this, less like that. Some of them are actionable projects. We want to build this. So we separated that out into goals and projects. Last Thursday, we all, as a group, kind of confirmed the goals that we have. So of the twenty or so goals, we prioritized, I believe it was ten of them, that we'll bring forward to you guys and make sure that we got it right. So next up, we're going to do the same with the projects. There's about fifty projects. So we're going to try and pick the top projects. The representatives from the boards and committees and the other folks in the task force are giving us input as to what they think the top priorities should be. So each kind of committee gave us their priorities. We compiled all that. And then Mary and I and Adam and Caroline went through the details of just initial feasibility and is this something we can actually do? We put a filter on of, is it something we can do in the next couple of years? And prioritize that stuff. So all of that should be coming before you, I would think, in September, maybe October, for prioritization. And then once we agree on that, we can talk about feasibility. The goal is to do all of this before we get to budgeting for next year, so we have all this in mind when we start planning out money for next year. So that's what I've got. I know Mary wanted to share some words as well, so why don't we do that? And then we can open it up for questions if you guys have any. So Mary, would you like to share? Hang on, we can't hear you. Could be my fault. Nope, that's working. You're not muted.
It's very quiet over Zoom. We can hear, but just like a volume one out of ten.
Interesting, okay, we can hear you loud and clear, Peter.
My volume is all the way up.
All right, there we go.
That's good.
Okay.
Good evening, you all. So I'm back after a couple of months hiatus. Dan and I have talked about it and just decided that it would be a good idea to be at the council meeting and give updates on the progress of the implementation projects. Think it's good for you all now. You know, I spent a lot of time talking to you about how we were going through the process, and now it's what we're doing for implementation. And as Dan talked about, there's a prioritization of lists, but in the meantime, there's also things that are currently happening. So I think to start out with, I'd say, you know, after two years, we should be really proud as a town that we have a downtown vision that had so much agreement and brought a lot of clarity and many voices to what we want as a town. And the community really came together around all the things that we wanted. And you remember, we had these guiding principles, which is now going to be our roadmap for the future. So I would remind you all that if you haven't looked at it, take a look at it, because now we're going to be using that as a roadmap of how we go forward. You know, now is kind of the messy part. As you start to get into implementation and the challenges and the projects and the troubleshooting and all along, this is kind of the messy and the fun part. And so as that council and as residents of the town, sort of I'm asking you to persevere, stick straight, because this is the time that may need everybody's voices at the table to help make all these projects happen. And you know, why persevere? I want to remind folks that when we started out, this was all about the downtown. We were worried about the vacancies. We were worried about the decreasing lease rates. And we certainly have seen some positive changes. Vacancies are at the lowest rate they've been in almost three years. That's really good news. There's been a lot of people working on filling vacancies. The residents have opened. We're now getting new apartments out on a decent that is opening up. That's great. That will bring more people into downtown. And there's a group of people who are really working on all these events. Counselor Egan was talking about the chocolate festival, the oyster festival. So try to bring people in. But the economics, the tough economics are still there. Lease rates in Freeport are lower than they are in a lot of other kind of new upstart communities in Maine. You know, the evening vitality is still not what we want it to be. And of course, the economy and inflation are not helping anything. We get reports from the businesses and how they're doing. And in essence, what they're saying is people are coming, but they're spending that less. So that one town needs our help down to implement all the things that we said we wanted for the downtown vision. So again, now is the fun part, the exciting part, but the tough part. So there's three things that are really going on right now for you all that I'm asking people to participate in and understand and like educate themselves on. The first one, as we come into, it's helping to implement what we said we wanted. The first thing is on policy and ordinance changes. Tomorrow night at the planning board, there will be an ordinance change that's being proposed to help take us from where we were. Remember, we have all these ordinances in place. We know where we want to be with the downtown vision, but our ordinances need to change to get to that. So Caroline and the planning board have done a lot of research, and there's ordinance that's up tomorrow about changing the parking means for downtown residential. So please, I encourage you on those policy and ordinance process changes. Look at the planning board notes and meetings, keep up with what they're doing. Attend if you have voices, but participate in it. These changes are really important to us as we make moves to change to what we want in downtown. The second thing that Linda talked about is the downtown residential. We're lucky right now in that we have several developers who are interested in developing housing in the downtown area. And so again, I'm going to encourage you, you know, be a partner because this is expensive, it's risky, and it's difficult for the developers and for Freeport to get exactly what we want. And we're trying to help bring everybody together so that everybody has a win. Freeport has the win of the residential that we need and want downtown, and the developers have a win of getting a building done, in fact, they can afford and that they can build here. You know, it's good for all of us. It's good for the current residents, and then it makes the downtown more viable. I guess Linda had talked about, it opens up opportunities for living that currently Freeport doesn't have. You know, our average house, not on the waterfront, is over five hundred thousand dollars now. So we need to open up residential in the downtown area that would help other populations come to Freeport and live and work here. That's really good for us. So it's good for everybody, and it's also good for the infrastructure. This is where our sewer and water is, so let's build where we already have the infrastructure in place. So again, this can get messy. Sometimes the design we do or don't like it, but I think it's more about coming together and being collaborative and working together to get this the way that we want it. And I think the third thing that I would say is as we do these project implementations, you know, you're going to hear one of them today from Adam about putting a park in the front of Town Hall. It's also like educating and supporting the projects as more an implementation. And you'll see a group of those, as Dan talked about, as we come in in September, October, to show you the whole list. But there's a lot of excitement and a lot of residents who are volunteering to help projects get underway that were envisioned in that downtown vision strategy. So super excited that we're moving along on these. And I think as my friend Tony always says, you know, we're better when we work together and we're collaborative. So here we go on implementation of downtown vision.
One last information exchange item. Counselor Pillsbury and I met with our finance director just to review our trust funds and reserve funds and how much is in them and where they're invested. And we're going to meet with the, our investment advisor in September to talk about policy and any tweaks we might want to make to that and hopefully do that as an ongoing basis like Counselor Pillsbury had suggested. So that's not something we do once, but something we do once a year, twice a year. So as conditions change, we have the opportunity to react to it. So that's ongoing, and we'll report back after that meeting. That's all I got for information exchange. So if nobody else has anything, we'll move on to the fifth order of business, which is our town manager's report. And we've got our manager on Zoom.
Hey, councilors, this is nice. This is the first time I've ever been remote and not in the council chambers. So it's somewhat relaxing, a little bit lower stress. Could get used to it. Hopefully I won't. I wanted to recognize something that Counselor Daniele said at the beginning of the meeting. The employee who did the bulk of the work, he's right, it was one single guy, Brent Moon, in our Buildings and Grounds Department. He's gotten quite good at rebuilding those little crossings, done several in Gorman Park, done now the one over Pounder Road Fields. Does look great. Did it in like a day and a half, it looks like. So fantastic job over there. And I really have to give him credit because it's the middle of summertime, and both he and the Public Works Department are running around like crazy, trying to do their regularly scheduled work. And they're taking a lot of projects, both Brent and Earl Gibson at Public Works, taking a lot of projects in stride, like, hey, this needs to be done in three days. Do you think you guys can adjust your schedule to get it done? And both of them are doing a really good job and going above and beyond. So I want to give them credit for not just bridges, but everything they've been working on for the past three, four weeks and all the stuff I've been throwing at them. They deserve, they deserve a huge thanks. Want to also talk about LD two ninety, which is the Property Tax Stabilization Program statewide that was just passed in this most recent legislative session. It has gone into effect. I know a lot of people have come in and asked us at the Town Hall, you know, over the past two months, hey, when can I apply? When can I apply? We've told them, as soon as we have the forms, we'll let you know. Well, we've let all the people that came in know, and now we're letting everybody else know. The program is up and running at the state level, and they can apply at the Town Hall at the Assessing Department. I'll go over the basics of that, so you'll know what you should be, whether or not you should be interested in this. So if all of the following are true, you may want to look at the Property Tax Stabilization Program. If you are at least sixty-five years old, if you're a permanent resident of Maine, if you have a Maine homestead that you've owned for at least ten years, and if you are eligible for a homestead exemption on the property that you're looking to place into the Property Tax Stabilization Program. So if you meet all four of those criteria, you definitely want to look at this program. And, you know, you're going to have to do the judgment yourself whether it makes sense. Spoiler alert, I think in most cases, it will make sense for people to be enrolled in this program. And what it does is when you apply, it stabilizes your tax paid at your yearly property tax that you have to pay to the town at the rate of that current year that you're just getting done paying. So if you apply, if you qualify and you apply, and everything moves forward like it's supposed to, at your next property tax payment, which would be now in November, sorry, the program, the enrollment goes until December of this year. So it will start after this tax year, but your next tax payment the following year will be at this year's tax levy. So if you paid, say, five thousand dollars or four thousand dollars for your property tax, it'll be frozen at that. Couple of caveats, you do have to apply, you have to continue to remain eligible, and you have to apply every year for this program. If you don't, if you lapse, or if you don't apply for whatever reason, your new property tax becomes what it otherwise would have been. So if you get into this program, you're going to want to, you know, continue to pay attention to it yearly to make sure that you're staying in it and that you want to stay in it. So if you are interested, if anything that I've said right now made your ears go up and you're watching at home, I would ask you to contact either Min or Louise in our Assessing Department. Either of them can help you out. Min is our assessor, and Louise is our assistant assessor, and they can be reached by email at assessing@freeportmaine.com or stop into the Town Hall to see them. It's a, we're cautiously optimistic that this program's going to continue, and it's going to continue to be funded by the state. Nothing's guaranteed, but it looks like it will be moving forward for at least the first couple of years here. So it's a big experiment, but one that most people are going to want to take advantage of or at least pay attention to. And in other tax news, the glamorous side of my job as tax collector, we did have an auction of tax-supported property. The Facilities Committee would be familiar with this. The Facilities Committee made a recommendation, if you recall, to the council who approved the sale of the property. We did have a, we had a bid process that went through. The property is tentatively scheduled to be purchased by an abutter for, the going price was, the bid price was sixteen thousand dollars. And one of the concerns that the Facilities Committee had was to make sure we recoup both our taxes and our staff time that went into this process. And I'm happy to report that we do. So I think we've met the conditions set forward by the committee and the council. We did have quite a bit of interest calls. But if you recall, this property was, had some issues on it, and we were assuming that it could only be corrected by an abutter to bring the property into compliance if it was merged with an abutter's lot. So it did turn out that the abutters were the most interested, but there was a lot of interest just from the general public. Then they did their research, and none of the people, fortunately, that couldn't make it compliant ended up bidding on the property. So happy to report that that is resolved. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to the room for any questions.
Okay, and you had at least one question from Counselor Pillsbury first, and then.
Peter, thank you. On your first point about the property tax freeze.
Program.
A microphone?
Yeah, it's on.
It's really quiet over Zoom, sorry.
Okay. Is this any better? So your first point about the property tax freeze program. So is that the difference will be made up by the state at a hundred percent? Is that correct? Is there any risk there? Because I know, or I think by statute, they wouldn't necessarily have to provide a hundred percent if they didn't have the funding. So is this any risk to us? I mean, are we thinking down the road, what happens if we don't collect all of our property taxes?
Yes. Not that we won't collect the property taxes, but that the program may either end up being on the local tax, you know, the tax base to pay for it, or it may have to, you know, the program may lapse or it may be revoked because there's not state funding for it. I do want to give a little bit of credit. There are concerns, operational concerns about it. And that specific point that you just brought up, how long does the state continue to fund this? Was raised, I think vociferously, and pointed out to me by our state rep, Rep Sachs, who was very concerned. She's on the tax committee, and she was very concerned about the long-term viability of it. So, and she's nervous about the future of the program. We've talked about it. I'm cautiously optimistic, but her concerns aren't good. If you recall, the revenue sharing was just this year returned to full five percent funding for the first time in many, many years. And I've got my fingers crossed, but in the, I think maybe Rep Sachs sees the possibility of it a little more than I do, but in the, you know, near to medium future, long-term future, the legislature could reduce the funding for it. It's something we're going to have to watch. And ultimately, if that happened, if there was no state funding available for it, it would act as a property tax shift. So other taxpayers would essentially pay up what the, pick up what the overage would be from the discount provided to the other taxpayers, which may raise some legal concerns to statewide, you know, at the big picture level. So good points. There are long-term concerns. It is funded fully a hundred percent right now. That's why I kind of ended with that note of, it looks good for now, but we're going to have to wait. that note of, it looks good for now, but we're going to have to wait and see and keep an eye on it to see the long-term viability of it.
All right. Thank you. One other quick question. Just, do you have an update as to what happened with the halftime sustainability coordinator and Yarmouth contributing?
Yeah, I do. Thanks. Thanks for the question. I think we're going to talk about it a little bit later on. There is a, there's a resolution that's on your agenda for some sustainability items. We're exploring the possibility of grant funding that. You did listen to the council's input, and I think there was a lot of interest from the council and from the public if that position could be grant funded. Yarmouth is also, so Freeport-Yarmouth or go, or the goal right now is to both apply for, for funding, grant funding for that. It's listed as one of the priorities in the, the resolution that you will look at later on in the meeting. So, if that is approved, and if the program is grant funded, both Yarmouth and Freeport could use the proceeds to hire a full-time person that would split between the two towns. If not, I do not believe that Yarmouth has separate funding. I think they're going to be relying on the potential of a grant fund. So, if that doesn't come through, we might really talk briefly with a few other communities, but it's looking like it would probably be a part-time, 20-hour-a-week Freeport position.
Counselor Fornier.
Thank you. Evening, Peter. I want to go back to the property tax relief that the state passed. We had a conversation a couple of months ago on how we were going to get that information out to the taxpayers. How are we going to do that?
Well, this is step one. It just came out on Thursday. So, my first conversation is with you. The rest of it's going to be in mailing. The rest of it's going to be on our website and social media. I know that there is a email list that had already been maintained by our Assessing Department of everybody that had contacted them, and they've already sent the materials out to them. So, we'll, we'll plaster this on all of our outlets, but this is a statewide program, and it's gotten quite a lot of press, you know, statewide in media, in on TV, print, online. I've read some stories on social media about it. So, the word's getting out there. We just have to make sure that people know how to apply for it. So, it'll be featured pretty prominently on our website, and we're probably expecting it'll be one of the higher traffic items for people through the door at the town hall to come talk with us. And by all means, anybody that, anybody that you on the council know about that needs this information, if you want to give us their contact information, I'll pass that along to the assessor, and we'll make sure that they get the application material sent out to them.
Excellent. Thank you. To my, my second question on the follow-up, since they have to reapply for that annually to be able to get that tax credit, it's something we couldn't do this evening. Can you look at that for the future to the council to see if we could do a mailing to them? So, it would be a reminder for them? Because, you know, I, I think that'd be very helpful for a lot of people that may forget it. So, I, if that, if we could do that for the town, I think that'd be a great service. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think we'll maybe look at how many people actually end up in the program. I can't imagine it's going to be, you know, half of the population. It might be sizable number of participants, but, you know, I think it'll be a subset, obviously, it'll be a subset of our taxpayers. So, it should be feasible to send out a couple hundred notices a year, reminders. This will be, depending on how long it goes on, and if it's successful, there could be some pretty serious implications down the road, you know, five or 10 years if it goes that long and is successful. You know, if you miss apply, applying for it in year nine or year 10, and you've got $1,500 or $2,000 a year on the line in the stabilization, that could be enormous, the impact on somebody. So, I think as we go on, it's going to be really important to make sure that we're reminding people every year, you know, for the first couple of years, it might be 100 bucks or a couple hundred bucks, but it'll grow substantially if the program continues. So, thank you for that. We'll make sure to look into that, how we can send out notices.
Sounds like that answered your question as well, Jake. Yeah.
Right.
Any other questions for Mr. Joseph? Right. Seeing none, moving on. Sixth Order of Business is public comment. So, if anybody is here from the public and wishes to comment, this is the right time to do it. You've got a few minutes to stand up, say who you are, where you're from, and what you want to talk about.
I'm Bob Stevens. I live at 50 Moose Crossing, and I have three things I want to mention. One, as a senior citizen, I want to thank Daryl for suggesting that reminders get sent out to people about things that they might forget about. Secondly, looking at the agenda, looking at that item 14722, which is great, following through on the state resiliency partnership community program. That's great. I don't want to address it, of course, because that is an agenda item. However, I noticed that one of our three top agendas is protect and conserve green space. And as I walked from my car, I thought, we've got wonderful green space, of course, which we don't own is the problem. Where we've had the, the Freeport Farmers Market, which, by the way, is continuing successfully. But there's a project there for building that maybe, maybe the proposal is to come up with something that looks so ugly that anything improvements will fly through. There are serious questions being raised by the Project Review Board regarding that proposal, particularly whether it complies with the design requirements. And I'm sure they're going back to the drawing board, and they're going to try to come back with something that'll pass. But looking ahead, if for some reason that falls through, I would ask the council to somehow consider approaching the, the owner of the property, seeing if anything could be worked out. I know we don't want to spend a lot of public money. On the other hand, that's a fantastic spot that ties in so well with what we have here as a, as a town. And so, I should just throw that idea out. My third item is sort of a short report on behalf of the Freeport Climate Action Now. Actions are continuing. Electrify Freeport is a big item that we, we are promoting with sponsors. It's going to be at the, at the high school. There are going to be a lot of electric vehicles, a lot of electric products here, opportunities for people actually to try vehicles. A lot of, of energy is going into that. And so, we're continuing to work on things that we hope will help the town. The last item is sort of my own idea as far as, well, it's Freeport can. And that's, I know years ago, the town looked at the capped dump out behind the recycling center. It's possibly having a, a solar project there. However, the size that was projected was too big for the service that's available at that site. It was determined that a three-phase was going to be necessary. Well, since that time, people like Revision and others, and actually a group out in Naples, is working on a, a community solar that doesn't require the three circuit, I don't understand this, doesn't require being that close to a substation, just having the, the one cycle that's available near our houses can be used for up to 100, perhaps 150 kilowatts, could, which could provide the equivalent of electricity for 18 or 19 homes. So, I mentioned it to Peter. I haven't had a chance to talk to any of you about it, but it's just something that we're sort of thinking, well, if something's possible, let's take a look at it. And of course, the town owns the site. There's no money that the town gets from that site now. Any development there that would involve anyone else would have to be a rental of the site. There would be a, a source of income there. Maybe it's down the road a pace, but we're, we're thinking about it. So, I just wanted to mention it to, to you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Other members of the public who wish to comment? We don't have a big Zoom audience tonight, so it's the guys in the room. It looks like we're done with public comment period. So, we will move on to our Seventh Order of Business, where all the voting happens. First up is our consent agenda, which tonight has three items on it. The first is, this is actually taking the vote for the slate that the nominating committee of the Maine Municipal Association has recommended. And to clarify, we're voting for one vice president and three executive committee members, not three presidents. And we've got some donations to the library and some awards from a trust fund. Any reason why we should consider these items separately? So, hearing none, Counselor Pillsbury, would you read the Be It Ordered for the Consent Agenda?
Be it ordered that the town of Freeport cast votes for the following people proposed by the nominating committee. Vice President Diane Hines.
You could just read the, on the agenda.
Oh.
The whole consent agenda can be, one motion.
Oh, sorry. Be it ordered that the August 2nd, 2022 consent agenda be adopted. That was much easier.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor of adopting the consent agenda? Roll call, sorry. Counselor Pillsbury?
Aye.
Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counselor Egan?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Seven to zero. Our consent agenda has been adopted. There is a signature associated with this, so I'll pass this down. And Matt, when you get it, if you can just pass it on to Chris. Next up, item 144-22, which is regarding special amusement permits. And our town clerk is here to tell us about it.
So, we are talking about removing the public hearing requirement for this in the future, but for right now, in order to do these renewals, we do have to do the public hearing. We are going to pull Althena's Cantina and Mass Landing Brewing Company off the list. They did not return their applications.
So, that leaves four special amusement renewals for Hilton Garden Inn, Stars and Stripes, Harrah's Secret, and Cadenza. Okay. Any questions for our town clerk? Counselor Daniele?
Just to, are either of those places going to get in trouble or anything? Do we need to let go knock on their door and say, hey, by the way?
They, they just, because they have liquor licenses, they can't have the live entertainment piece unless they have the special amusement. So, they're not in violation because neither's involved in that right now. Yep.
Okay. Seeing no other questions. Counselor Fornier, do you want to read the Be It Ordered for that one?
I can't. Be it ordered that the following special amusement renewals be approved pending code enforcement and fire rescue approval. Hilton Garden Inn, 5 Park Street, Stars and Stripes, 8 Montney Road, Harrah's Secret Inn, 62 Main Street, and Casitas, 5 Depot Street.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of renewing the special amusement permit?
Roll.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Roll call. Counselor Pillsbury?
Aye.
Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counselor Egan?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Seven to zero. Those have been renewed.
Everybody signs this?
I think so, yeah. Looks like at least a majority, anyway. Next item is 145-22. And the next two items are similar. They're setting public hearings for new liquor licenses. The first one is for the China Rose Restaurant. So, Counselor Lawrence, do you want to read that? And then we can ask questions at first if we have any.
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for September 6, 2022 at the town council meeting that starts at 6:00 PM to discuss a new liquor license application for China Rose located at 23 Main Street. Be it further ordered that copies be distributed equally between the town clerk's office, the town manager's office, and the Freeport Community Library for inspection by citizens during normal business hours, and a notice be placed on the Freeport Local Cable Channel 3 and town website.
Second. Thank you. Any questions for our town clerk? Seeing none, we'll vote in favor, we'll vote to set the public hearing. So, I wish I could do it that quickly. So, Counselor Pillsbury?
Aye.
Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counselor Egan?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Seven to zero. That public hearing has been set, and we have one more public hearing to set. This one's for Good Fire Brewing at 180 South Freeport Road. So, Counselor Daniele, do you want to read that one?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for September 6, 2022 at the town council meeting that starts at 6:00 PM to discuss a new liquor license application for Good Fire Brewing Company LLC, 180 South Freeport Road. Be it further ordered that copies be distributed equally between the town's clerk's office, the town manager's office, and the Freeport Community Library for inspection by citizens during normal business hours, and the notices be placed, notice be placed on Freeport's local cable channel 3 and the town's website.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. Any discussion on this one, setting public hearing? I'll do another vote on this. Counselor Pillsbury?
Aye.
Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence?
Yep.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counselor Egan?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes for a seven to zero vote, and that public hearing has been set. Next up, we have a little bit longer item. This is item 147-22, to consider action relative to our enrollment in the community resilience partnership. I know we've been doing a lot of work in this at the staff level and also at the community level. It says that our town planner's going to introduce it, but I don't see her, but I do see our assistant planner. So, I assume that, are you here for this item? Okay. Do you want to introduce it?
Sure.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Cecilia Smith. I'm the new assistant planner, and I never met any of you, but nice to meet you. I've met not any of you, but a lot of you. So, this is a resolution that the town needs to pass in order to enroll in the community resilience partnership, which is a grant program offered by the state that will, it's a competitive grant, but we, after we enroll, we'll be able to apply for grants that range between a minimum of 5,000 to up to 50,000 per town. If we partner with other towns, it could go up to $120,000. It does not require matching grants for the vast majority of projects that we can envision. So, there's a list of 79 different projects that align with the state's climate action plan. So, we held a community workshop to identify what our community wants to prioritize for this grant on, on, sorry, June 22nd. They came up with these priority areas, and I gave you this memo which has the language which is required for us to be able to enroll in the program. That's what the state wants to see. However, I want you to note that we don't have to pass the whole language. It's only the ones that have an asterix on it. So, it's basically just the one that identifies our priorities. And then the last two ones. The Freeport Sustainability Advisory Committee, they met June 13th, and they unanimously passed this resolution, this draft resolution for you.
So, it looks like we can skip. The Be It Resolves are the important ones, and the first, whereas, is the important one is on our agenda. Any questions? I don't know how long you can get away with saying you're the new assistant planner, because it's, it's been a little while. Any questions for Cecilia? All right. Counselor Egan?
Cecilia, this grant would help, would it help at all fund the position, or is it just related to the projects?
It is under my, so we've been partnering with GP COG, who's helping us enroll in the program. They have a little more detail on what we can get away with or not. But my understanding is that it could be used to fund, you know, to partially fund the sustainability coordinator or the climate action plan.
And it looks like, just to clarify, it says this right in the agenda, but the three priorities, the first of it is supporting the sustainability coordinator and development of a climate action plan. The second is about improving municipal operations, and the last is protecting and conserving green space. Counselor Lawrence?
What is, what else does this bind us to? Is it, is it binding? Is it, can the state come up and say, oh, well, now you've got to do this?
Sure. So, the only thing that it binds us to is when we finished, get our grant, and we pursued the project, is to just give them an update of how it went and just give like a brief explanation. This is how we used it, and this is the lessons that we learned from it. Unless we pick, picked a project that was, you know, very different from, I mean, the, the state had all these 70, I think it was about 70 something, I don't remember right now, but action items, and they're so broad that it would be almost difficult to find a non-sustainability-related project that wouldn't fit within one of those descriptions. And if we did, then it would require a 10% matching grant. And if we did, then it would require a 10% matching grant.
Okay. Councilor Fornier?
This to do with the idea, it's to do with the verbiage. And I, I guess it's a legal question. Do we have the authority to bind future councils to what this statement is saying here? I don't believe we do. Which would be us moving forward to electric vehicles, whatever it is. My understanding is we can't bind, and maybe Peter could help me on that, future councils by directives as we sat down there. And I can read through here, and a number of these action items, in fact, would do that. So, that's the one question I would have.
Yeah, I'm scanning the language. Peter, feel free to jump in. I don't, a lot of this, I assume people, a future council could make a contradictory resolution, but I don't see anything here that says we have to spend money three years from now, put it that way.
If Councilor Fornier's point is correct, if there was any commitment, like a binding commitment to money that we weren't gonna spend in this fiscal year, that would be, I'm looking at it right now as well. That would be a big problem. I think the biggest problem would be kind of like political flip-flopping or waffling. If we said these are our priorities and then a future council, you're absolutely right. You can't force a future council to agree with this. They can make a, you know, a resolution overturning all of these priorities. If we're not matching the grants, or there's no financial obligation there, I'm not super concerned. But it is something that maybe needs a little bit more. Maybe we do need to look at that at the staff level, just to make sure that if a future council decided not to participate, that wouldn't, you know, put us on the hook for any money in the future. Maybe Cecilia and Caroline and I can probably talk with GP COG about that, just to confirm that, to make sure that that's not a concern.
Yeah, thank you. I, I can read this as it may, that's all. So, I just want to make sure we aren't, aren't making that happen, because I don't, I think it's bad policy to do that. Thank you. And legal.
Councilor Pillsbury, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do have a question. I was just looking at it, and it's a very valid point. I think some of these are, most of these are very broadly worded as just, you know, these are good things for us to be doing. But, you know, take another pass at it, I think is, is also reasonable. I mean, I am in support of this. I just wanted some clarification on sort of the negotiations with Yarmouth around the sustainability coordinator. And is their participation only based on the fact that if we get this grant? And is our submission of the grant only in coordination with them? I guess I'm just trying to understand the process and the timing of this, because if we're gonna have to go it alone, I would be open to the idea, we've already approved half the money in the budget, trying to fund the other half, because it's still my position that a half-time person isn't as effective as a full-time person. And I think there's a lot on the plate and a lot on the agenda that needs to happen. And especially, you know, hearing what's happening with the visioning and the timeline that you and Mary kind of set out as to when we're gonna look at projects. I mean, getting someone soon is gonna be important, and I just don't want to drag this out too long. But I kind of don't understand where we are in negotiations with, with Yarmouth and when we decide to go it alone or, or not.
Peter, you want to take that one?
Me, I, just clarification. I, I just want to understand what Councilor Pillsbury is saying. I think, I think what I'm hearing is if Yarmouth does not either get the grant or go through with the grants, do not write off, do not write off that being just for Freeport, the other half of the match, and then going for a full-time position? Or are these coming back in the, to the council and discussing that? Is that what you're asking, counselor?
I mean, I guess that's my personal position on it, but I'm asking, where are we? I mean, where, where's the negotiation with Yarmouth? Did they vote and say, we're not approving any budgetary funds to support the second half of the sustainability coordinator? We're only gonna put this through as part of the grant? And what's the timing on that? Have they allocated an amount? Are we doing it in coordination to get the higher dollar value? Or are they doing their half and we're doing something else? I, I guess I just want some clarification on kind of where we stand.
Yeah, that is correct. My understanding is they have not allocated funding, budget, general fund dollars as we have. Their participation would be contingent on receiving their half of a grant. It wouldn't, I, I believe the two amounts could be higher if we applied together for a joint project. But even if we don't, we are both eligible for them individually. So, my conversations were only at the general level with their town manager, with my counterpart. And they stopped when, nope, they didn't, they didn't budget for it. However, their planning director is working with our planning director on this grant. And if they get this grant, they're gonna, they will come in with us this year. So, Caroline has talked with their planner or their community development director a few times on it. So, I'm not up to speed on the most recent conversation they've had. But is there a specific question I can ask her? I know she's watching in the audience. She can probably get the answer to us before we move on this.
I mean, it, it was really about the timing, because we can't apply for a grant until we pass this action item, right? And so, can Yarmouth apply for a grant if we're the partner on that grant and we haven't adopted this language? I mean, I guess I just am really struggling with the timeline of all this.
I, I just, I forgot to point out.
Yeah, I, I don't know the timeline on either of our grant applications. Cecilia, do you know the timeline on either of our, on both of the applications? I know that the program, we could both theoretically apply at the same time, but I don't know where they are.
In terms of, I forgot to mention that the deadline to apply for, the program has, is running for like these two rounds. We already missed, I think, the last one. So, the deadline is September 30th for the next round of, of applications for grants. And then after that, it's only on March 22nd. And I also forgot to mention that the grants are somewhat competitive. So, just so you know that, you know, there's, it's not like a blanket grant that is guaranteed.
And I, I did get some feedback from our planner, and she told me it's $125,000 limit if it's a joint application, as opposed to $50,000 for each individual town. So, we get, you know, about $12,000 extra per town if we do a joint application. She's gonna be talking with their planner tomorrow. They've got a call scheduled after whatever happens tonight happens, so she can update him.
So, we basically have to come to some sort of conclusion on this action item to be able to pass the language, to then apply by the end of September. But where does that leave us? I mean, when are we gonna be notified of an award? Because that's still holding up us posting for this position for a sustainability coordinator, right? Because right now, the only secured funding we have for it is our budgetary funding for a half-time position. And that posting looks a lot different if it's half-time than if it's full-time with Yarmouth's money or our money. So, how do we reconcile all of this?
Yeah, I would say it's gonna, so I would put, if we were to not be worrying about grant funding this at all, and we were gonna put this out ourselves and fund it and hire in-house, I would put a best-case scenario of six weeks, so a four-week posting, you know, probably closer to eight. So, you know, four-week, three-week job posting, four-week job posting, two-week selection process, two-week hire would be probably the inside limit that we could expect. So, this would put us back whatever September 30th minus that is. So, you know, two months, safe to assume.
Well, the deadline is September 30th, right? That's not when we would get the award?
Right. Yeah.
That's when we'd have to submit the application, including the resolution from the town council and all the rest of the material.
No, it's all right. Yeah, that, that's the, the question is, do we post for a half-time saying we, there may be the potential to expand into full-time if Yarmouth gets their grant? Or do we wait and not have one for what's probably gonna be, I would guess, at least 60, 90 days past September 30th? So, probably end of the year. If we wait and say, take the gamble that we might be able to get a full-time position, we probably can't even post until January 1, which means we'd be getting somebody on board in March at a, you know, rough time.
Yeah, we could post beforehand for both of the options. It would be a little bit awkward, accepting applications for part-time and full-time position. And that's gonna be a little bit rough if somebody is looking for one or the other, and whichever one doesn't materialize, they're gonna be partway through, you know, they may be a little put out. That is one way we can do it, if we're happy to put somebody out, you know, a month waiting. And also, with the current job market, people aren't gonna be waiting around on conditional job offers. We've found that you've gotta pretty much move on the spot right now. So, I'd say it's gonna put us back at least 60 if we go for the grant funding, but it gives us access to more money and a full-time position. So, it's, it is a trade-off, and it's up to the council which way you want to proceed.
Yeah, go ahead. So, here's just, to throw another wrench in there. Yarmouth gets their grant, we hire a full-time position, what happens next year?
Yeah, I mean, the, the grants are, I assume they're one-time grants, right? Here's, well, if we get $120,000 for, for both towns, that pays for a little bit more than a full-year salary, but then we're, it's back on our dime the following year. Just like it, it technically isn't our budget this year. We, you know, we voted for the half, half the position, to fund half the position.
But it would be unfortunate to have to let somebody go, just be like, oh, we can't afford a full-time position anymore. Now, we're down to our half-time position.
Right.
It's unfortunate.
Right. So, I guess where I lean on it personally is I would say, let's post for the half-time position, since that's what we had committed to. And then in the job posting, mention, you know, there's the opportunity to expand this into a full-time role.
Maybe.
Maybe, but, you know, it, it could be Yarmouth getting their grant. It could be Councilor Pillsbury advocating next year for more budget money, or some other grant that pops up that might be able to pay for part of it. And that could be part of the directive of the, you know, the job, is hey, half your salary's funded. If you want to be full-time, help us find a grant for it. It's gonna change who we get to apply, but I, I'm thinking sooner is better than later. But, yeah, Councilor Fornier?
Maybe we come at a different angle. Maybe we identify a couple of priority items that you have brought up, and we hire under a contract with the possibility of hiring full-time down the road. That might be an opportunity to bring someone in, be very specific on applying for what we need to get the ball rolling. If it works out, we have funded here, so we could fund a half-time position. And maybe if we have six months of them testing the waters on both sides, that could work out. And I think we could have funding somewhere within the budget that we're allowed, high contractors to do specific projects for the community. Maybe there's another way to look at it.
Yeah, I, a couple of points. I'm in favor of moving quickly and not, not waiting. I, I just think it doesn't make any sense to wait for something that may or may not happen. I think Daryl's got a really interesting point there, because also down the road, I worry about having someone who just wants a half-time position, and then we find we need to expand this. And then we're faced with a decision of, okay, we need to cut ties with this person, because it's not the fit that they want, versus having someone come in as a sort of contract to try, knowing that we have the funding, and we can always make that half-time hire once we find out if we, if Yarmouth got their grant or not. I just, I do worry that if we hire a half-time person and then Yarmouth gets the money, and that person doesn't want to expand, then we're in this position where we've got someone that, long-term, the fit isn't quite right, and we are stuck not being able to grow that. Or grow it by having a second half-time person, which I think would be not a good situation. So, that may be a better, a better option.
Yeah, my, I'd be hesitant about the contract position, only because I think there's a different pool of people that would apply. And I know myself, I do a lot of contract work, and, you know, when people come and say, hey, can you come full-time? Like, no, it's not my business, right? My business is to, to contract. So, I think, and it's, you know, there's echoes of the debate that we had when we were talking about the budget, and there are pros and cons to funding a half-time position. It's not ideal in some cases, better than nothing. We also might kind of get a, a perfect fit. We might find a Goldilocks candidate that says, yeah, I need something part-time for some family situation, but I'd love it if it became full-time in a year. So, there's, we might get lucky, and we might dissuade some candidates, we might attract some others. So, so that's where I'm coming from. Councilor Lawrence?
But if we hire a contractor, it gives us a chance to see what we actually need. And maybe the contractor isn't the right person, but at least we can say, oh, now we know what we need. So, it gives us a chance to find the Goldilocks candidate, if we are, find what we want as a Goldilocks candidate, right?
Councilor Daniele?
Or we don't use it as, we're just gonna hire one person to be our contractor. We could say, oh, we really want this priority to get done. How much is it gonna cost? Oh, that's $20,000? Sure, we've got that funded, with the idea that this person we're gonna bring on is gonna come from the grant money, and we can pool with Yarmouth and say, nope, we're going after the 120 as a group. And then when that gets funded, okay, now we can hire somebody great.
Yeah. My personal preference here, there's a big difference in having a contractor versus having an employee. Sort of if you, we have a lawyer who's on retainer by the hour, we're judicious in when we call them and say, we need your advice on something. If it's somebody who's down the hall, it's easy to go and say, hey, what do you think of this? So, in this case, we've got all these downtown plans. What do you think of this? What do you think of that? What about this grant? You want to apply for it? Rather than saying in advance, here are the terms of the contract, here are the things we want you to do, and by default, the things that we say, that we don't say we want you to do, we assume are things you won't do. So, I feel like we'd be leaving some opportunity on the table if we constrain their role too much, versus just having them available as a resource that anybody can tap into. Because there's already a lot of requests for, if we had a sustainability coordinator, I would call them on this. I would call them on that. I would ask their opinion on this, or help them fund that. Councilor Pillsbury?
I, I mean, we may be talking about scenarios that are not possible anyway. I mean, we just don't know. And I think the way we do find out is to post it and see what applications we get, what skill sets are brought with those candidates, and evaluate them through the interview process. We're under no obligation to hire anyone, and we can say, the fit doesn't seem right, let's go a different direction, or, you know, who knows? I mean, we could get 1,000 applicants, or we could get zero. It's a, it's a wacky market out there, so. I would like to move on something, though. I mean, I just don't think waiting is, is the right thing to do.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, I mean, tonight, technically, what's before us is just the, you know, do we want to join this, this program? And then, you know, we're having a separate discussion about, about posting. But going back to the program, is there any language in there that, I'll sort of talk to Daryl and take it on this. Is there any language in there that you feel is, I'll say illegal, but, you know, is there anything in there that commits a future council to spending money? To me, it seems like it's more goals. So, we're saying today that, you know, we believe that transitioning to electric vehicles is something the town should do. A future council could say they don't think that's something the town should do, but we're not committing to say, we're going to spend exactly this much money on electric vehicles two years from now. Is there any particular language there that you feel we need to change?
I, I think, you know, I look at the statement as, you know, whereas the community and the infrastructure results, and I'm trying to think where we're at. Whereas the energy efficiency, weatherization improvements to provide lower municipal electrical expenses and building more comfortable for employees and visitors. Yeah, I think you can argue either side. Is, this is why I'm not sure. I, I, and I don't, I, you know, have the answer from a legal person. But whereas, you know, transitioning, that says, we are gonna transition the municipal fleet vehicles to electric vehicle, lowering fuel, maintenance costs, and reducing the cost of budget. So, to me, that is a commitment that we're saying, from this point on, we are gonna transition to electrical vehicles for our municipal fleet. And I don't think that is a, a good policy statement, as, you know, I think down the road, maybe things will be coming. But there's a lot on our play here that, new technology's coming, and that's, that's my concern.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, my read on it is that it's similar to the, the council goals we've had in the past, where we say it's a goal of ours to mitigate the increase in property taxes. It doesn't mean we can't spend any more money. It just means that a goal of ours is to keep the tax rate low. So, the way I read this is, you know, whereas transitioning municipal fleet vehicles to electric vehicles lowers fuel and maintenance costs. Yeah, I mean, it's, that seems to be true. We're not saying we must buy electric vehicles in the future. So, I, I view it as guidance rather than a direction.
I mean, if, if we're also just looking at this from a legal perspective, I mean, there's no timeline. This could be something that we take incremental steps in, and it could take us a very long time, at which point all that will, all the vehicle fleets that will be made will be electric. I mean, there is an, I mean, as I read through it a little bit more carefully, based on the discussion we've had, I don't see anything that's really holding me up from voting for this at the moment. that's really holding me up from voting for this at the moment, because it doesn't commit anything. It says, let's take these steps, and these are steps that, there's no timeline associated with them. It's what we can tackle as a town and a council with the infrastructure and the funding that we have. So I would be comfortable supporting this tonight.
Yeah.
Once again, this is, I think it was originally a model resolution, I think, from the state's governor of office, where they have the grant, and, I mean, you can scratch out, you know, you're not required to have, you know, if there's any particular section that you're not comfortable with, you can edit it out, or choose which ones, just, you know, that first whereas, and the last two, my understanding, those are the ones that are, like, the ones that we need to have.
Yeah, I agree with you, Matt. I think it's important to take action tonight, because our next opportunity is our first meeting in September, and we've already missed one deadline for grants. And the next deadline's coming up September 30th, so if we don't even commit to the program until September, and then we first have to start getting a grant application together, I fear that that might be a hasty kind of application. So I'd be in favor of moving something forward tonight on this. And again, I'm open to specific languages that that people feel is incorrect, offensive, not, not right. But I'm comfortable with it as is. That's where I stand.
Well...
Councilor Lawrence?
It looks like what we have to do is the first three statements, right, and the, yeah, the last two where it says, be it resolved. So, I mean, that's what they need us to do, right? All these other ones are kind of, all the whereases are, heretofore, therefore, this is why we're doing this. But if it's, you know, if it's a legal thing, and we're feeling, if we struck those, and just did the first, the first one and the last one, or be it resolved, to be further resolved, wouldn't that take care of all this?
From a technical point of view, I suppose it would. I, you know, I'm in favor of...
I know you're in favor of the whole thing here, but it, it does seem that it could be committing us to something. That's what, with all of the whereases, or could be, or someone can say, hey, you said this, I planned this, this is, that's all.
Yeah. Councilor Daniele?
Could we start the grant process now, knowing that the imminent vote is happening early in Sept- I mean, I'm, to be honest, I'm in favor. I could vote as-is and be fine, but if we don't need it until September 30th, if we vote on the first, I don't want to set us back or anything, but as long as we are actively pursuing the grant, that's all that really matters, right?
And if we know where we're going?
I'd probably want to bounce that off the planning staff. I think Caroline just jumped on our meeting, which is convenient. Somebody might have texted her and told her there's a whole bunch of discussion going on about a resolution. Cecilia, do you know that, the answer of the timing? Do we have to do anything before the grant that's gonna be, Nicole?
Sorry, you broke out towards the end there. Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Is there anything critical that we're gonna mess ourselves up on if we don't, the council doesn't take action on this until September 1st, with the grant application being the 30th? Mainly, cooperation with Yarmouth is a concern. So is Yarmouth gonna be making some decisions? And I might ask Caroline to weigh in on that, too, if she's got a microphone that's working.
I think we, we just need the resolution passed so that we can, you know, finish writing the application before September 30th, so we can send it all in as a packet. In order to enroll in the program, you know, this is the resolution, there's a self-assessment we had to do, and submit some other paperwork, and then we can, we don't need to send a grant application at the same time, but the deadline is September 30th. And, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I see nodding. So Councilor Egan, you had something?
I just want to respond, I guess, to Chip's point about committing us to something, and I, I agree that there may be elements in here that, you know, once we get some momentum going, somebody may have a different opinion about it, but I'll just point out that the communication that I'm getting from our residents is overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly in support of us taking an active step to get on board, and particularly, to have the council actually demonstrate leadership on this. And we've had lots of discussion, particularly during the budget, about the, the position that we're talking about here, and there were a number of comments made, boy, if we just had a grant, it would be a lot easier to commit to this. Here's the grant opportunity to try and fund that position. I agree, it's only for one year, maybe we stretch it to two, if we call it a contract, or however we do it. Maybe we get a little bit more money if we team up with Yarmouth. I think those are all clear things that the staff have great sight on to be able to maximize our leverage here. But for me, I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable committing to all of the language in here, because I feel like that's what a huge amount of people in our community are asking us to do. And it may be a little bit nervous that we're setting the stage to then go after this, and, you know, politically, some state entity might say, well, Freeport, you, you know, you said you wanted to do this, and now here's the match requirement, and then we have to have a very difficult discussion, discussion about match. But I think we don't get, I think we don't get anything done if we don't demonstrate some leadership as the council and start leading our community in this direction. Because for me, I think it's incredibly important that we start taking steps to, to bring our community forward.
Thank you. Councilor Fornier?
I don't know if I want to put them on the spot. We have, we have two attorneys here, and maybe my concerns are legitimate. Councilman Bradley, I, you know, your wisdom would be helpful, Bob, too. You know, I, I don't know.
I don't think they are. I'd be happy to add anything to that, but...
Yeah, let's see.
You have time for public comment?
Let's see if Councilor Bradley wants to comment first. You don't have to, but if you want to chime in, you're welcome to.
I don't have any idea.
Nice short-term statement. Yeah, we don't have public comment on the agenda, but unless anyone objects, I would, I'd be fine listening. I know it seems like there's a couple of people that might want to share some ideas. So Mr. Stevens, if you want to go first, and share anything you want to share.
Okay.
Yeah, up to the podium, or grab a microphone from the side there, if you want.
I just wanted to add that we were planning on meeting with the Freeport Sustainability Advisory Committee, coming up soon, to help us identify which projects we were gonna select to work on grants. So I know the sustainability coordinator is one of them, but it's just one of the many other projects that the community identified.
Thanks, Cecilia.
Chair and members of the council, we're sort of in a tough spot. We hope we could have Yarmouth on board, so we could proceed that way. Well, what we really know is, we need to move to do something to what we can do to alleviate here in town, the effects of climate change. All we have to do is watch what's happening around this country. And there will be options available under federal programs that will help us do that. We need a sustainability coordinator to do that. Putting off further discussion of this seems to slow down on what I'm hearing from a lot of people, you're hearing from a lot of people, your, your own Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board is, is working on, the time and effort that have been put into this. We, we fund, we take care of our, our, our public vehicles in town. We need to take care of our, of our environment here in town. We need this community coordinator to, to work, and to take advantage of the opportunities that a sustainability coordinator will bring. So I urge you not to put off this discussion. As far as what's legally binding here, Daryl, the further resolves are binding. The whereases, I'd be happy to be on the other side, and confidently argue that none of those are binding. They are statements of, we feel this way, we like this idea. We're not committing to do anything by any of those whereas clauses. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Yeah. Do you want anything, or you're good?
No.
Okay. Yeah. So my suggestion is, we read the entire, we don't have to read the whole thing out loud, but we, we keep the motion as is, vote on that. Certainly, if people want to suggest amendments, they can, but I think not adopting it and taking out the guts of it makes a bigger statement, right? It says, we're not signing on to all of these things. We don't feel this way, or we can't agree to feel this way. And I would hate for that to be the message that Freeport puts forth. I think it's important for us to show that, yeah, we do think these things are important. We're not committing to exact solutions. We're suggesting we have three priorities. We're suggesting we want to be at the table, and we want to help apply for grants, and have partners in, in the work. And here are some of the reasons why we're doing that. So the more we talk it through, the more comfortable I am with the entire motion as is.
And this, this came from a public process. So we, we had the general public participating. I was here that evening on something else, and we actually stopped what we were talking about, to listen to what was going on down the hall here at the resilience workshop. So I, I feel like there's broad support and lots of enthusiasm, and so I would echo what Dan just said, that we adopt the whole thing.
So, Councilor Fornier?
A lot of people are in support, but we also have some other sentences that are on. And, you know, I think that's what makes America work sometimes. We are on both sides of, of discussions. And some of the discussions that have been brought forth to me are solar panels. A couple of things. Number one, what are we doing at the end of their life service? And at this point in time, they're burying them. So again, with my grandkids, I'm gonna be throwing more problems for them at them, as a point of discussion. And the other, the other point where people say on solar panels is, the majority of solar panels are coming from China, a country that is not particularly our friend. Good point of discussion. I hope we can change that in the future. But there's, there's really two strong sides to, to this argument. We really, I, I think we need to do something, no question about it. I'm glad we've supported the part-time position for the, here in the community. Hopefully, Yarmouth will come along. But I, I am gonna, I have had people contact me, so it's my job to be to represent them also.
Fair enough. I agree. So in the interest of moving forward, I think, Councilor Egan, we're up to you. If you want to, what I'd suggest, maybe just read the whole thing, or read the first?
Whereas the town of Freeport has completed the Community Resilience Partnerships, Community Resilience Self-Assessment, and List of Community Actions, and held a community workshop on June 22nd, 2022, which prioritized the following action areas. One, support a new sustainability coordinator and the development of a Freeport Climate Action Plan. Two, improve municipal operations, efficiency and electrification, provide equipment upgrades and efficiency improvements to prior, to priority buildings, install EV chargers in municipal buildings to support future electrification of the municipal fleet. Three, protect and conserve green space. Whereas, the town of Freeport experiences flooding, intense storms, drought, high heat emergencies, and other natural hazards, and seeks to better prepare for future conditions. Whereas, the planning for community infrastructure resilience will protect people, preserve businesses, and the local economy, and reduce the impact and costs of natural disasters. Whereas, investing in energy efficiency and weatherization improvements to, is proven to lower municipal electricity expenses, and make buildings more comfortable for employees and visitors. Whereas, transitioning municipal fleet vehicles to electric vehicles lowers fuel and maintenance costs, and reduces the uncertainty of variable fuel prices on municipal budgets. Whereas, the Gulf of Maine is warming 99% faster than other oceans around the world, and ocean acidification and warming ocean temperatures pose a serious economic and cultural risk to the main maritime industries, heritage, and tourism. Whereas, shifting seasonal temperature and precipitation patterns threaten local natural ecosystems, economic activities such as agriculture, tourism, and outdoor recreation, including winter sports and other outdoor activities, and public health due to increased incidence of heat-related illness and tick-borne illnesses such as Lyme disease. Whereas, the town of Freeport is prepared to reduce energy use and greenhouse gas emissions, and increase the resilience of people, infrastructure, and businesses. Whereas, addressing climate change will present economic opportunities for the town of Freeport, as well as opportunities to invest in the public good and cost-saving practices. Whereas, the state of Maine's four-year climate action plan, Maine Won't Wait, as the title, seeks to put Maine on a trajectory to decrease greenhouse gas emissions 45% by 2030, and 80% by 2050, and achieve carbon neutrality by 2045. Whereas, achieving these emissions and resilience goals will require Maine to act with urgency to slow the causes of climate change, and prepare people, communities, and the environment for climate-related impacts to come. Whereas, the Community Resilience Partnership provides grants to municipalities and tribal governments for activities that lower energy expenses, greenhouse gas emissions, and increase community resilience in alignment with the state's climate action plan and goals. Be it resolved, that the town of Freeport commits to participating in the Community Resilience Partnership, which supports community leadership in reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and increasing resiliency to extreme weather and climate change impacts. Be it further resolved, that the town of Freeport designates Caroline Pelletier, Town Planner, to coordinate planning, implementation, and monitoring of energy and resilience projects, and to be the primary point of contact to the Community Resilience Partnership.
Thank you for that. Second, thank you, Councilor Daniele. Any other comments before we call for a vote? All right, we'll go down the line. Councilor Pillsbury?
Aye.
Councilor Fornier?
No.
Councilor Lawrence?
No.
Councilor Daniele?
Yes.
Councilor Egan?
Yes.
Councilor Bradley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So five to two, that motion carries. And thank you all for the interesting debate. And like Councilor Fornier said, this is sort of how democracy works, and it's happened before our eyes. Next up, we've got item 148-22, which is about some street name changes in South Freeport that I think Mr. Joseph was gonna explain, since this has some history.
Yeah, we'll give the, see if we can keep this to five minutes. That was maybe overly ambitious of me. Now we're at 4:45. And we talked about this a couple months ago. The main problem is in the suffix naming of three streets in South Freeport Village, which are currently listed as SF, which is not a recognized SF, you know, intended to designate South Freeport, so to designate Main Street and South Freeport from Main Street, where you are all sitting on right now. The intent is good, it makes it a separate, separate street for emergency purposes, 911, and addressing. However, the postal service does not recognize SF, because it's not a cardinal direction. SE, SW, for southeast or southwest, would be a cardinal direction. S is a cardinal direction. So Main Street South, Middle Street South, Park Street South, would be compliant postal service designations that would still give them unique designators from the Main Street, the Park Street, and the Middle Street in Freeport, in the town. So, the comments we did to notice is now about this, I'm not sure if there's anyone in the room, but we did get some good conversation with residents, and by some, I mean just a little bit. Everyone was generally in favor of it. I had a couple good inquiries that weren't really town answers. There are more questions about what the postal service is gonna be doing, which we don't really know. The postal service can choose to do home delivery, can choose to do mailbox delivery, things like that, if they want to, or they can continue their current practice, which is that there is no route delivery in South Freeport, and everybody can get a post office box either at the South Freeport Post Office, or at the Main Street Post Office in 04032 Freeport. Another common question we got is, will it be 04032, or 040, whatever the South Freeport Post Office is, 78, or 72, or whatever it is? And that is an answer that we do have, which is, everything currently is 04032 outside of that one building, which is the South Freeport Post Office. So, South Freeport Post Office, PO Box addresses have 040, whatever the last two digits are for South Freeport, I should know that, but I don't. Everything else, the physical properties are 04032. So the, these three streets, once they are put on the database, and they actually are deemed to exist by the postal service, will be, the physical properties themselves will have an 04032 tag, no different than they currently do. Right now, you just, those properties don't exist in the eyes of the federal government, because there's not properties don't exist in the eyes of the federal government because there's not an adequate street name that they can put into their database. This one seems like a real no-brainer to me. I was pretty cautious with it. We had a lot of conversations with residents, mainly because of the history. And I know it's a touchy subject in South Freeport Village, but even after we sent out some notices, we've heard a couple more pieces of feedback from residents like, "Yeah, it's a nightmare to get packages down here from UPS, FedEx, or DHL, or any, you know, common carriers, or any delivery services." So there's a lot of workarounds that people have, but this will, in theory, once those addresses matriculate through the federal addressing database, will solve some of those problems for people. And those are the ones, at least, that the town is responsible for creating, you know, 20, 25 years ago when we did this. So I'm hoping it's not super controversial at this point, but I'll take any questions you have.
Councilor Fornier?
Yes, Peter. On the E911 system, which gives geography location of the residence, will this work with that?
Sorry, trying to unmute. Yeah, it won't change any of the geo coordinates that are registered to any of the properties. It'll just dispatch, eventually, once it gets through the system, instead of saying, you know, Main Street SF, it'll say Main Street S. The dispatcher's still going to have to read that suffix tag, the same as they would with the SF. They just won't have the F there. It'll just say S. So they're used to doing it now. I know it's not foolproof, but it's a pretty good success rate, to the point where we're not concerned, especially with the GPS coordinates that are tied and the street addresses that are tied to the actual landlines when that happens.
That's my point. So you're telling me that Main Street S, in the future, when that one Main Street S is put in, geography, it will come up on the computer screen at the dispatch center as the first residence on the left on South Freeport?
Yeah, it won't change anything, I'm told, except for, in that record, the suffix changing from SF to an S.
Okay.
So all of the information that currently exists will still, we'll make sure that is the same through the database.
Okay.
So we're literally changing the name, not any of the other information that's attached to it.
Yep.
I will be very cautious and confirm that with Brunswick and all of the police chief confirm that there's not any gaps on the timing. This may take a little bit to make sure that somebody isn't surprised. Like, if we put the order in to change the street, they don't go, "What is this?" You know, I mean, I'll make sure that everybody knows about it, and they give us the thumbs up at the time.
I think it's probably an issue with consolidated phone, the phone carriers, so the ones that do that database, Peter. So, thank you.
Yep. Yep, we will absolutely make sure that that's a priority. As you know, you dealt with that for years, so.
Any other questions? If not, Councilor Pillsbury, I think you're up to read the motion.
Be it ordered that the three streets in South Freeport Village listed below be renamed as follows. That Main Street SF renamed to Main Street S. That Middle Street SF renamed to Middle Street S. That Park Street SF renamed to Park Street S.
Second.
We can? Yeah?
Is that permitted?
We can. Let's get a second just to get this on the floor. Thank you. You already did. Thank you, Councilor Fornier. Yeah, unless there's objection, I don't mind taking comment from the public, so hold on. I just gotta ask you to speak, come up to the podium to speak so they can hear you in internet land.
Thanks, Council and Peter. I'm John Ellis. I live on Main Street in South Freeport. And we were relieved to get the notice that this was going to be discussed, and then further relieved to get, I opened the letter today, Peter, about the, that it was generally positively received. We, when we were at the closing table to buy our house, the seller said, "Have fun chasing mail and packages for the rest of your life." We thought he was joking, kind of a grump, and it turned out to be exactly the case, with a one-year-old at home, and it's been a mess. So I think this is a step in the right direction. I did reach out to you, Peter, and I was wondering if anything, if there would be any, I just want to flag for the council that the majority, based on conversations I have had, it seems like the majority of the people in South Freeport think their zip code is 04078. The broker that sold our house has been there for 40 years. He, with total certainty, the zip code is 04078. It's not. It's 04032. And all the deeds say 04032. And I was hopeful that, you know, to give it a totally distinct address, and just because I think this may come back in a few years if another pandemic hits, whatever, you know, why, it's probably a USPS issue, but I would just ask that if it comes up as between the town and USPS, there's precedent in town, I think, other zip codes. It just seems like, in Southern Maine, in Bedford, Bedford Pool, this is how they solve the problem. Why not just end it once and for all? You wouldn't even have to really change the street name or do any of this. It would just be a new zip code. If ultimately the postal service decided to do home delivery, it would solve that problem. So I just don't get it. And I just wanted to put this on your radar. I know it's not squarely what you're voting on tonight, but you should probably all know that that, many residents that have been there a long, long time erroneously think the zip code is 04078. So, thanks.
Thanks, yeah. Peter, I'm guessing you've had that discussion already with the post office?
Yeah, in painful depth. I don't have a good answer. They didn't have a good answer for me to the gentleman's question, which is, it seemed to me the easiest thing to do all along would be to re-zip or to do something like that, so you could have them called whatever you want, because he's correct, there are places where it's duplicated. They did have reasons. We talked as far as the regional addressing officer for Maine, who's in Portland, and I think Maine, New Hampshire, and part of Vermont as well. So I'll repeat that request, that it still may make sense to, you know, change the name for sure, so there's not duplicates. But the town would absolutely be in favor of doing a new zip or putting them into the old zip, however that would work, if it, whatever makes it simpler for the folks down there. But the postal service ultimately has to agree to do that. So I don't have any problem passing that along, again, that we would, you know, if that's doable, that we would like that to happen. But that'll end up at the corporate, the postal bureaucracy locally in Portland, so it's good.
You got one question up here, from Councilor Egan?
Peter, do you think that effort would help at all if there was a formal action and a formal vote from the council? Go ahead and pass a resolution. I'd love to vote on that and settle this issue, because I have people that I know in that neighborhood who have told me this exact same thing, and I thought it was already a separate zip code. So I'd be strongly in favor of whatever language we'd say, like, please, just create another zip code for the village.
I don't want to give false hope that it will make, yeah, I don't want to give false hope that it would make any difference. I don't think it would, but I wouldn't discourage if the council wants to come up with some language, or if we want to work on that, to pass that along, that it's coming from just the council, not me, that, nothing wrong with that. I'm not convinced it'll change their mind, but hey, every little request helps.
Great. Nothing we're doing, if we vote on the action as before us tonight, nothing there precludes that from happening, all right?
That's right.
Okay.
Correct. They would be two separate requests. Yep.
Okay. So with that, you guys ready to vote on?
Maybe, sorry, I can't see. I didn't realize you were talking. I can only see myself going in two different directions here. I will maybe have the request with them before we do the final submittal here. Maybe I can talk with the addressing officer, tell him we've made the change before we put it into the database and promulgate it down. Maybe ask what the possibility of that is. If that is something that would entertain from the council, we can bring that back at a future meeting for, and then hand it all to him. I'm fine with that, if that's the council's wish, if you guys would go along with that.
Yeah, sounds fair. I wouldn't not move forward on what we vote on tonight, but it's worth asking the question, how much would our resolution matter? And then if we want to do a resolution at the next meeting or whenever. Sounds like, I see a lot of nodding heads up here on that. So we'll vote on the street renaming as it is in 148-22. It's Councilor Pillsbury?
Aye.
Councilor Fornier?
Yes.
Councilor Lawrence?
Yes.
Councilor Daniele?
Yes.
Councilor Egan?
Yes.
Councilor Bradley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So that passes unanimously. So we're taking baby steps, but we're making progress, and hopefully people can get their mail, and be at a valid address that exists on planet Earth.
It's only 2022.
I know, right?
It's the rush.
It's the rush.
We've only been last 17 hours, huh?
All right. We got one more action item, which I think is an easy one. It's about using town property for the fall festival, and I believe we're up to Councilor Fornier for this one.
Be it ordered in requests for the use of town property for Visit Freeport for Fall Festival September 30th, 2022 through October 2nd, 2022, be approved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Lawrence. Any questions? Or, Peter, I assume this is pretty straightforward. They probably want to use town hall lawn for the booths that are at the incredibly popular Fall Festival.
Yep, there's several locations in porta potty, porta potty locations and tents on both the town hall property, the vacant lot next door that's, we've talked about earlier tonight. And as you'll see, their application shows relocated handicap ADA parking. One of them, four spots from two, which I think is great, which is part of the new requirements when we do this. This is the last minute. It did come in, but these are the, I'm really happy Visit Freeport is out ahead of this and making the request, so I wanted to put it on the agenda last minute, so we don't have to wait until September 1st to tell them that their September 30th use is approved. It's the same thing we've done for many years for the Fall Festival, or at least three years now, I think, so.
Yep. Seems pretty straightforward. Any questions? We're called for a vote. We'll go down the line. Councilor Pillsbury?
Aye.
Councilor Fornier?
Yes.
Councilor Lawrence?
Yes.
Councilor Daniele?
Yes.
Councilor Egan?
Yes.
Councilor Bradley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we have passed that unanimously as well, which concludes our action items, and we're on to other business. We've got a conceptual review of our town hall property, and we've got some technology to undo. I do that, and I think you're gonna connect there. While Adam's setting up, I'll point out for those watching online that our air conditioner is struggling to keep up a little, so it's a little warm in the room. So if you're sensing that there's a little lethargy in the air, I'll blame it on that.
Hey, don't feel bad. The only room in our house that doesn't have an AC installed is the spare office. So I'm here in 83-degree weather, just sweating it out with you guys too. So solidarity.
Here we go.
Here we go.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Adam Bliss. I proudly serve as your town engineer. Tonight, I'd like to present to you preliminary design, almost final design, of this town hall site beautification project that we've been talking about at committee level, at the downtown vision task force, that Councilor Daniele asked, "Are we gonna see this and get to comment on this again?" And that's also why I'm here. I have handouts of this presentation in paper form, if you want, or you can just watch on screen. So, anybody want a paper copy?
Let's watch while we're, and we can take the paper later, maybe.
So let's see. This project originated as a stormwater management opportunity. We received a grant through the Maine DEP, and after talking about the grant and the opportunity with Peter, this grew into a site plan or downtown beautification project, an opportunity to draw people farther, yeah, farther down from the village, and have a place to eat, to have a cup of coffee, to have a conversation. Because I can count, there are many more people get to basically the Grove Street intersection, and then they turn around. And we want to pull them in. We want to demonstrate to business owners, to residents, to patrons that there's more to do in the village. We have some nice coffee shops and smoothie shops. We want to do our part out front to welcome them here. So this project combines many viewpoints, combines many viewpoints in improving the site. That includes ADA accessibility. We want to enhance ADA accessibility, aging in place, sustainability, EV charging stations, an outdoor gathering area that people, that people want to be in, and perhaps maybe an art or small music performance space. We'll see. There are other added benefits from these site improvements, including added parking, which we know will be in demand down the road, stormwater and pollinator gardens, and welcome, a welcoming gathering place. Tonight, I'll walk you through the proposed site plan. I'll introduce the site, both existing and proposed conditions, identify some of the features I just described, go through some of the material details to make sure that you're on board with this, describe the process that I went through by talking with various stakeholders, whether it be ADA, Complete Streets, Municipal Facilities Committee. Many, many lenses have seen this project. I'll talk about scheduling and phasing and the budget. So, let's see. I'll just start with the introduction. There we go. Let's see. The goals are to enhance ADA accessibility. Right now, we have two entrances with steps and a sort of out-of-place, out-of-the-way ramp out front here off the front parking lot. It's awkward. We really don't have a welcoming place or an entranceway. What happens is, if people park here, 90% go to this entrance, and about 10% go to the Main Street entrance, and it's just awkward. Aging in place, one of the lessons I learned in talking with the ADA consultant is ADA is not just parking spots and ramps. It's also aging in place opportunities, those that might need a cane, making it easier for them. I'll get into those details a little bit better, a little bit later. So Main Street beautification, outdoor seating are goals. Sustainability, stormwater management, parking, and charging stations. You've seen this plan before. It's been a bit. This was a concept plan, something I labeled 10 to 30% completion. What I do is I take that, I put it into a computer, I make the grading work, I make sure it's up to code, and that's what I'm showing you tonight, what I've put into the computer. So what we see here, if you'll bear with me, is the proposed conditions overlaid onto an aerial photograph taken in 2019. So I don't know how well you can see that. If you want me to blow it up, I can. But the green lines represent walkways, and white lines represent elevation contours. Blue lines represent granite walls, granite benches, and there's a cyan line, probably can't see well, which is a landscaped area. So I'm gonna move on and just start to talk about some of the features. So for orientation, I think you all know, there's the parking lot, there's the driveway at the bottom of the page. Main Street is towards the left. We think of this as an extension of Main Street, and we're producing this congregating circle out front that invites people in. It can be a meeting place for coffee, or a conversation, or who knows, art display, music performance. And we'd like to add some signage that helps people understand, hey, if you want to talk to planning and codes, you can use this entrance, or if you want to go see the town clerk, you can use this entrance. So let's see. Starting to get into the, sort of the details. What I'd like to do is use locally sourced materials as much as possible, and use materials that represent Freeport, like granite. Use materials that play off the existing brick and granite that we have. The fire station, we did the same when we, when we put in the new sign. We used granite signposts because that played off of the granite lintels and the brick facade. So we have granite lintels and the brick facade. So, we have retaining walls on the site to make the site entrances fully ADA accessible, so no steps. And to do that, I need some walls about two feet tall to hold back or to build up that ramp. Build up the ramp to the central circular area. So that circle will be raised above existing grade about two, two and a half feet, and will feather the grades back down. No issues there. And so, I'm proposing granite. That could be granite blocks with smooth faces that sit nicely together, or it could be a poured concrete with a granite veneer. And around the circular area in blue, we have these radial benches, and they're just places for people to have a conversation, sit and have a break. The lighting, today the, the lighting is, I think it could be improved. Tongue-in-cheek here, it feels like it's airport security screening when you walk through them, especially out here. It's just, anyway, so what I'm proposing is, those lights go away, we're gonna put in pedestrian bollards, preferably something like a granite post with a, with a fixture on top. Like to have some input from you, yea or nay, don't need to get into the weeds, because ultimately, I have to go to the project review board and get this approved. And so I want to be able to say, I want, I'm confident in the granite and the bollards, provided we have the money for it, but I don't want to, I don't want to be a ping pong in a table tennis match, so. Bollard lighting with granite posts. Yes, Councilor Fornier?
So you run into a tractor and it's granite, what's, how much of a job's it gonna be to fix? That's gonna happen?
If it gets broken?
When it gets broken.
No, no, it won't get broken. Famous last words. Charging stations. I give credit to Councilor Egan, who had a resident approach him, and actually, I think it came out of the Sustainability Committee, looking for opportunities to, to put in charging stations. That, that is proposed out here. They're expensive. We don't currently have money in the budget for that yet, so I'll talk about phasing and budget a couple slides away, if you'll just give me a little bit of time, some patience. I've talked about this central gathering area, and surrounding that area will be attractive vegetation, but it has a dual benefit to it. It's, it's stormwater management, a shallow little depression that takes water coming off the roof, and currently from the lawn, puts it into a shallow little planted area, infiltrates into the ground. Meanwhile, we get nice, beautiful landscaping, vegetation, within that planted area. You can also, so if you, if you can see it, there's a circular ellipse surrounding the gathering circle. Think of that as your kind of cradle, or your kind of, that's your, your background to whoever is sitting in that space. That is it for the slides. I went through that rather quickly, I could talk more. Why don't I pause, let you guys digest, and give me your comments? Yes?
Where are the site plan with the EV chargers, Adam?
Yeah, good question. They're hard to see. They, there are two little blue squares down, down at that corner.
You would be proposing a level two?
Well, I'd like to think proactively towards the future. Level three makes more sense, right?
Short-term visits, it sure does.
Yes, and there's a cost to it. What I haven't totally wrapped my head around is, how do we, I don't think we want to encourage somebody to park there for eight hours and hog that spot. Right? And I haven't, I haven't, I'm not done wrestling with that, how to make sure that doesn't happen.
Level three would be better for that than level two, because level three, you can charge your whole car in a half, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, and level two, you need to be there for hours to get a full charge anyway.
And the level three chargers also have a sensor, that if you do leave your car there and your car charges in 25 minutes and you're gone for two hours, the meter's ticking and they charge you a parking fee. And that's right up front, which encourages you to come, disconnect your car as soon as it's finished charging, and make it available for somebody else.
On that thought, can we put some sort of credit card machine there, so when you hook into it, you pay a fee? Because guess what? Air used to be free at the gas stations back when I was a young lad. Now we go up, you pay a buck just to hook up to pump up a tire. So, the argument here is, the people that use it ought to pay their fair share. So let's have some sort of credit card.
I agree. I think that decision is ultimately up to leadership.
I agree too.
Adam, have you looked into grants yet, or is that still something to be determined, especially for the EV stuff? I know there's a lot of.
What I, what I did do was, I visited the Scarborough Library, because I had learned that they, they installed two charging stations. So I said, hmm, I'll, I'll go check it out. And I reached out to the library director, and she gave me some wonderful information that I shared with Councilor Egan, so we have a starting place. Haven't pursued it yet, but what I did learn is I don't think a grant would cover all the costs, but it could cover a portion.
Where is the parkage penalty going to be for handicap?
Great question. Right now, I'm proposing three ADA spaces. We have an access aisle here, and on each side would be a van-accessible space, 11 foot wide, and a nine-foot wide space. I'm also proposing a third one here, right up front, close to the building, but I need to consult with the ADA consultant to make sure we don't mess it up, because there's a, there's an elevated sidewalk there. Yeah, so, it's, the site may look big, but it's pretty small, and there's, there are a lot of constraints that I had to wrestle with, from ledge-out crop to being congested. In terms of congestion, if you go outside here, it's, it's congested. There's, and another goal is to spread things out, like the flagpole. That gets relocated right up front. How many people know we have a flagpole out here? You don't see it because of trees, it's just, it's congested. Same with an Armed Services Monument. That gets relocated right here, both visible, both as a reminder of the freedom that, that we, we have.
Adam, there's a sort of artistic drawing that you had earlier. Is that an earlier drawing, or is that current?
You mean this one in the bottom left?
Yes.
That was the concept plan, the 10% plan?
Okay.
And...
The one on the right is more current than the sketch?
Yeah, the one on the right is more current, and I can go into what changed. I can do that in two or three bullet points. Basically, I wasn't able to fit-
Parallel parking here, because of that ledge-out crop.
Question, okay.
Other than that, that's, well, that was a big change, relatively big. The other was-
Grade entrance, Adam, at the front door?
Right, and I said, hey, let's, let's take ADA serious and make the whole site fully compliant. And we, I, we received a lot of praise for going that step. And all we're talking about is retaining walls. So, relatively small money that well, creates more welcoming opportunities.
Are you doing anything on the right side of the drawing, in that sort of wooded area?
Good question. Presently, no. You may recall in the Downtown Vision Plan, there was some ideas generated for walking paths, which we could certainly do, like a woodchip walking path. I did a small stormwater management project over there with some granite seating around it. That could be enhanced, but right now, that's, that's not the focus. So, on hold, I guess you could say.
Jake?
Do you already have funding for this?
Good question. Thank you for reminding me to talk about phasing. This project has to be phased in at least two phases. We're gonna focus on the front Main Street area. That'll be Phase One. Fingers crossed, Earl, Public Works Superintendent, and his crews will work on that this fall. If I were to hire that out, first of all, I couldn't get anybody here until next spring. Secondly, I, we'd have to pay double. We have a council-appropriated project budget of $75,000 that doesn't go very far. And the only way to, to make at least Phase One happen is if Earl, thank you Earl, if you're listening, willingly offered to take that on. And I think it's a good public, or it's a good, it's good optics too, for the, for the public, to see that, you know, Public Works doing a job on a town-owned property.
My last question is, I don't see here, but I've had a couple of people approach me to be able to cross from Linda Beans, other than Grove Street, for Federer Pierre to come into town hall. Will that be addressed also in this plan?
Yes, good, thank you for that. That, that came before Complete Streets Committee back in July, and we have, so what the end result was to explore adding a crosswalk that connects over to Holbrook, landmark wise, the mailbox here across the street. It's, technically speaking, it's, it's awkward, just because, you know, well, there, there are already two crosswalks so close by, but one is angled and one is, nobody stops at, so, but yes, it's, there's, we're investigating that.
Peter has a question as well.
Yeah, I just want to point out, the overall design, if you look at it, 10 years of sitting here every, you know, four or five days a week and looking at people using the front of that property, then it's clear that whoever designed that liked the straight edge, you know, when we did the original, what used to be the parking lot slash playground slash whatever it used to be years and years and years ago. You know, the front of the town hall is here, there's a straight walk right up to the street, up a set of steps, and there's another straight walk that cuts across it from Grove Street to the parking lot. And almost every single person that uses that lot, myself included and staff included, you're going diagonal from the Grove Street corner to either West Street or to the parking lot, or to the other side entrance of the town hall. I don't think I've ever seen anybody walk over, walk down the steps and walk like this. It's about, you know, one and a half times as far as just going diagonal. So I really like that, that circular interchange in the middle, that's a straight shot, if you look at it on the plan, diagonally across the property, so people can stop ruining the grass, and then it's a straight shot into the building. And if you look at that block, eliminating that set of steps there, and putting two ramped entrances from the corners, there's no place to get onto that block without coming in from one of those two corners. So the side, the steps up to the sidewalk don't make any sense at all, because as Councilor Fornier just pointed out, there's not even a crossing there. So you're either coming south onto that block or north onto that block, and then if you're going to the town hall or diagonal, you'll be cutting across. So, it seems a little bit different, but it's kind of born out of watching where people are actually walking and adjusting to the feet instead of, you know, the ruler that somebody used to make it exactly bisect the property 30 years ago. It's a really neat design, I like it, thank you.
Good points. The, Eric is in your handup, I'll get to you in a second too, but before I do, one of the conversations, Adam, we had once was, the way the elevation is now, the sidewalk is a couple of feet or so higher than the, the middle of the lawn, and that could lend itself to some bench sort of, I don't want to overblow it and call it an amphitheater, but there could be some seating, and that central area could be a place where someone could speak, perform music, do some, something, and have people sit around and watch, which would be fantastic. Is that part of the plan? Could it be?
Good question. I, that's something I'm still wrestling with, and here's why. What Dan is asking about is, we have an elevated Main Street sidewalk here that is oh, three or four feet above grade with traffic noise, and yet we have this intimate gathering space 30 feet away, almost 40 feet away. It's, what Dan is, what Dan and I had discussed and others was perhaps granite blocks along the pavement for people to sit on as part of, if music performance were to happen out here. I like the idea conceptually, I'm just not sure how well we use, or how able people can hear somebody playing cello or violin or what have you. I don't know that.
They could be reciting their complaints against the town council.
We could have a town council meeting out there.
That'll never happen.
Meeting in the area and have people, yeah.
Doesn't mean we shouldn't try, but granite blocks at 500, $1,000 apiece, you know, that, that adds up, so. Maybe we do a pilot project there, you know? Instead of committing to 50 feet of block wall, we put in a couple of pieces and see how well it's used.
My final question is, once the walkways to the end, they're gonna be a caddem, and they're not gonna be brick, are they?
You're talking about materials?
Yeah.
We'd love to do concrete.
Good, that's all I need to know. Because bricks are slippery, they're hard to make-
Oh, definitely no bricks.
Thank you very much.
At question really is asphalt over concrete. And, and concrete matches much better to the brick and the granite than does asphalt. Schedule, yeah, we talked about phasing. Just to be clear, I can't do the whole thing at once, otherwise people wouldn't be able to get into town hall. So, we know already that phase, it has to be phased, and we're gonna focus on this sort of quadrant of asphalt. Phase two will have to happen next year or beyond with a budget appropriation, because we just don't have the funds to do the rest. I could go on, but-
We have a grant application pending still for $50,000?
Yes. I worked with Brett Richardson, FECD Director. I give 98% of the credit to Brett for pulling that grant together. We applied for $50,000 to cover, you know, to, to cover additional items. So, we should hear in late August-
Late August, great.
-whether we were successful or not. It's targeted towards municipalities, it's for things that we just described. Augusta was successful, I don't know, a year or two ago.
One more question for me. Is there anything in the plan or any locations where we could put some public art, or encourage someone to propose public art? So, sculpture or something like that?
Peter and I talked about that. We had, what we arrived at was somewhere surrounding the, that circular area. I'd like to keep it sort of open, flexible, but then again, I have to get it approved by project review board, so.
Or in the, Adam, or in the middle, if there's a way for sculpture type, or right in the center, we did talk about that too, as a potential location.
Correct, and just so we're clear, I, what I've understood is something that's mobile, sort of temporary, not permanent. sort of temporary, not permanent. I like the idea of permanent, maybe it's a falcon or something. But something that's, but what I have understood is something that's rotational, like it could stay there for a few months and something replaces it and something, and so forth.
You're like what, AKA fans, yeah?
Yeah.
You know Kim Metzger at the high school runs the art program over there?
Yeah.
Does a fabulous job with students and they do all kinds of media. Connect her with a public space, give students a chance to focus on that. That's, that would take care of itself.
And win.
Yep, yep.
I don't know if this has even been thought about, but if you want something to attract people, you usually got to have food and something to drink. Now, is there any possibility for a vendor down the road to set up close? And I'm thinking, you know, a small food cart or something like we used to have around town, you know, a lot. That, to me, would be an attraction to bring people south of the downtown area. And I don't know if this, you know, could be thought about, just a small place. And maybe, you know, one time the high school had a hot dog place, which generated revenue. The Rotary used to do that. What a great opportunity, maybe do a community-minded thing there to...
Great question. Every year, about November, right, Chris? Council, by recommendation from Complete Streets Committee, votes on four approved public pedlar cart locations. And the places that are requested are always the ones that generate the most foot traffic. And historically, they've, everybody wants the two spots behind Starbucks. The third and fourth spots are at the train station, that's been vacant for a few years now, and one out here, non-specific location, but out here. And if I'm correct, I thought there was one reserved for public safety, but I don't think it's ever been used. So, you know, if you build it, will they come? We certainly hope so.
We did, at the, one of the open houses we had for the downtown project, we had a food cart in the parking lot. They took up a couple of spaces and people went to the food cart and then came back inside.
I think, I think the hot dog cart space that Adam was referring to is on the corner by the mailbox, or at least it used to be. There have been two years where that permit has been taken out and both times it's been abandoned mid-year because it wasn't making any money because of foot traffic, which is legit. We pretty much saw them setting up and, you know, five or six customers go there at lunchtime and that's about it. So I think if we're successful in restoring people there, that demand absolutely will bring. You know, if it starts to be more of a traverse location instead of just like something that's there to walk around as you go to the Town Hall, then I think that it would become more in demand, that space. And let's get the, let's get the hot dog cart or the spring roll cart or the oyster cart or whatever it is, and the beverage cart. Let's get them back there and go in and restore some life to that little spot. I would love that.
Dan, I'd like to round out one thing. Your comment about walks along the bank. And this original concept plan showed essentially seating facing the roadway. Purpose being, somebody's walking, they have bags, they have a child, what have you, sit down, take a breather. And ideally, there would be street trees, which we are proposing, but still massaging out those details because it's just an awkward embankment out there. We want the street trees that thrive, not struggle. So that's part of the plan too.
What's the next step? Are you taking this to PRB or are there more revisions coming?
That, that's what I wanted to talk about. And I'll do it quickly. Process-wise, I would like to go before project review board, the third Wednesday of September. Hopefully get approval that night. Earl starts construction the following week, weather permitting, crew availability permitting. And we'll focus on demolition. And then we'll focus on earthwork. Paving, pavers, concrete work, that probably would happen in the spring, once things settle out. But that's the, that's the, that's sort of the rough framework.
Peter, I'm looking at you for this one. Do we need to vote on any of this? Or is this all we need to do, just kind of nod tonight and say, yeah, this looks good?
Yeah, this is, this is for feedback. If you don't want us to do it, by all means, you guys have the kill switch right now. Just, just say so. It's, it's kind of in the rough, you know, the firm draft form. It's got to make a few little changes. This is the general concept that'll go to project review board. They may require other changes, things that we're not anticipating. I don't think they'll be huge, but there could be some. So this is, if everyone's okay with the design or at least doesn't want us to stop, the plan is we would get the whole thing approved at PRB and start construction on the front quad, if you will, of the Town Hall. You know, that project to be done within a year. And then we'll be talking about funding the rest of it during our budget process next year for, you know, construction boats to start maybe 12 months or so from now. That would be the side entrance, the parking lot, the re-laying, the relining and the new parking spaces and the big ramp kind of on the side entrance as opposed to the steps and that awkward hell-shaped ramp. So that's, that's what Adam and I think a potential schedule is. You know, it won't commit the council to having to do the other half of it if we don't, for some reason, don't want to do it or there, you know, there's a budget crisis next year. We can always walk away from that or put it on hold. But the intent would be we would get it done if there's nothing that's been delayed for them.
Have I done a good enough job articulating what the proposal is in that out front here with that circular gathering area? It very much has a human element to it. Engineers aren't good at feeling human feelings. That's why we work with landscape architects. And he developed the concept, I took it and made it real, so. Thanks for your time tonight.
Great, looks great.
Yeah.
Full speed ahead.
Yeah. Eric, I saw you at hand up earlier. I assumed that your question was already asked by somebody else. But if you have something else to say, raise your electronic hand again and we'll get to it. But awesome, thank you, Adam. That was really great.
Thanks for the feedback.
Next, the only thing we have left is executive session. So Peter, you know, we can state the, what's written here is the reasoning for it and go into it. But do we need to do a different Zoom? Do I need to log out of this one and log into a new one in order to do that? You're muted.
Wondering if Tom is available there, if he's still in the control room or it's just Brian, because we're going to need to make sure we decouple the Zoom from the TV, but we can still use the Zoom account if we want. If he can decouple it, otherwise we're going to have to start a new one, which might be a problem to get Ed and I there in a timely fashion, so. We can do that. Okay. So why don't we, why don't you read the motion, Dan, and then take a five-minute recess while Tom's got to decouple to make sure the cable broadcast is stopped. We'll have to get all of our two attendees out. Sorry, folks, sorry, Eric and Jim. And then I'll lock the room and then you guys will come back in afterwards in the council chambers and vote us out of executive session and report any actions that you've taken.
All right, so while all that's going on, what we're going to do is we have item 150-22, which is an executive session to consider action relative to an executive session pursuant to one MRSA Section 4056C pertaining to a real estate matter. So I'll move that the town council enter executive session. Thank you, Counselor Egan. Counselor Pillsbury?
Hi.
Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counselor Egan?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley? And the chair votes yes. So seven to zero, we are going to enter executive session.
Are we going to bring ARPA funding back to...
It's a good question. I saw it on the list and, you know...
Peter, we are clear on TV.
We have...
Right, give me thumbs up if you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I've locked the meeting. I think that means that, should I boot the FCTV?